Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board Meeting. And I believe everybody is here tonight. We're not missing any board members or staff, so that's terrific. Approval of our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve. Second, any discussion?
I didn't receive the budget information until right now, any of the financial stuff.
It was sent out earlier this week.
Sent out on...
I didn't receive it.
I don't think I got it actually either.
I think you're on the emails. I checked it today.
I know I sent it out.
I got it and everybody was on there, so.
Sorry, I didn't see it. It's all abstained. I saw Josh's email that said it was coming out on Monday, but didn't receive anything after that. I looked before I came.
It was December 11th and then there was another one sent out on...
Today's the 12th.
Right in front of me.
I've got it. I just had it.
On the 9th, there was a set sent out too.
Thought I received something from you on Josh saying that Cameron was gonna put it out on Monday and I looked, but I didn't see it, so I'll just abstain.
It came out because I started to print them and there were way too many.
You're not abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. All right, committee report, sewer committee. The man of the hour is here.
Brian.
Well, you finally have in front of you the final report of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District Sewer Committee. I'm here, I think, to answer questions. I'll tell you that the report was basically developed, we kept pretty good minutes of all our meetings and so we had a good record from which to develop the report and that's what we used that and I think it's pretty comprehensive. There's a lot of information. I'm sorry it couldn't be less complicated, but that's just the nature of the beast, you know, that's the way it is, so.
Brian, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second. Josh, I apologize, this was sent to the entire board, so everybody should have a copy of it.
I failed to print those in the package.
Yeah, that's okay. It was sent on the 5th of December. Okay, sorry.
So, let me say just a couple of points that I'd like to make. First of all, in the text of the report, I refer to informational materials that the reader can find online at DLWID.org, which is really nice, except that information is not online.
Uh-uh.
Well, I mean, I did it intentionally because my point is to be sure that we can soon, real soon, get it online, along with the report. What's not online is the, oh, maybe the overview is online. I forget now.
Are you talking about the Civil, no, not Civil, was it Civil West that did that?
Oh, yeah, correct.
That is online, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that what you're talking about, Brian?
I'm thinking about that and also the overview. Is that, that's online, I think.
The overview always has been online and, yeah, I did put that, the new draft for the cost analysis study, I believe is what we coined it. I can link that and get it onto our Facebook page and do an informational post after tonight.
All right, well, anyway, I think there's one or two things I refer to in here that might not be online. I'll check that and if they're not, let me just email you, Josh, and we'll get them online, so. I mean, I think that's important because there is a lot of information and we need to be able to refer people who have questions. I want to answer all their questions, but to back up those answers, we can say, you can go online and actually read this for yourself in the comfort of your home and, you know, and digest it. And, you know, it also provides us with some credibility that, you know, we've done the work and it's there for you to see, so. I think it's important. And the other thing is there's just this one point of misinformation that seems to be persistent regarding the effect of sewer on the east side of the lake and that's the, its effect on development, what kind of development can take place and the misinformation is that it will allow for a tremendous increase in development. And I mean, you know, I think some people would interpret that to be good and some people would interpret that to be bad, but it's just wrong either way. There are two reasons why it's just not gonna have much impact on development. The first is the physical factors involved with the sewer, the pressure sewer system itself. And these are listed in the PACE report. They talk about flow distance and velocity and pressure constraints, et cetera, et cetera, elevation changes. All of these things constrain how many homes can be put on the system. In fact, they had to stop short of going all the way along the east side of the lake. They stopped about a quarter mile short of Brown Bear. There's about six residences down at the end of the line that they couldn't extend to because it made it too long and put too many residences on the line, so. That's one reason and that's the biggest reason why it can't, it won't allow for more than the development that's already allowable. The other one is a Lincoln City ordinance that says that you can, well, what's allowable is one water tap per lot that was in existence in 1987. So, anything that's subdivided after that or could be, somebody who says, oh, great, you know, sewer's coming in, so let's subdivide my five acre parcel into whatever the zoning would allow, isn't gonna be able to get water service for any more than that one lot anyway, so. Now, obviously, a city ordinance can be changed, but, I mean, the city's inclination is definitely to not do that. The cities, if, when you talk to city folks, if anything, they feel like they have already allowed too many, too many water taps and too many septic systems on the east side of the lake, so, you know, I don't think it's likely that ordinance is gonna change anytime. So, anyway, I just want to, because that piece of misinformation keeps coming back at me that, well, this is gonna allow for tremendous additional development on the lake and it's just...
Here, Brian, it says 85, the city said 85 existing lots.
Right, there's 85 lots on the east side that have not, that were in existence in 87 that have not been developed. A lot of those are pretty marginal anyway, you know, they might not be able to be developed and that's why they haven't been developed so far.
Well, 'cause they can't fit a septic on them.
Yeah, because, yeah, right, or for whatever reason.
But let's say if a sewer went around, let, I mean, I guess I would presume that you could have 85 new dwellings.
Yeah, but some of them are marginal even if a sewer came to them, but you're right. I mean, you have to, you could assume that.
You wanna assume the worst or whatever, the best, whatever way you wanna look at it.
That, yeah, that, and I think PACE says that, you know, assumes that all those 85 could be developed or could handle, the system could handle those 85 additional lots. That's built into the report.
So, that's what, a 20% increase, right?
From five something to, you know, 500 and some to...
So, not quite 20%.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, that's not huge.
Right.
So, anyway, does anyone have any questions about any of the...
I want to thank you for the completeness of the report. It was a very good report and I think it sets a pathway, you know, the directions. I liked how it explained in three different ways that it could carry on and you outlined very thoroughly what it would take and I think the work that has been done kinda set, paves the way for that next step. And I know we were asking for the report because we wanted to get it all in one package and I think you did an outstanding job of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, so, and that begs the question, well, what is the next step? And so, we'll, basically, the sewer committee will continue on, you know, somewhat free of the constraints that being a public body put on us, you know, in terms of, I mean, we're still gonna announce our meetings and invite people to attend and stuff, but we don't have to worry about the formality of all the government rigmarole that goes along with it. We can have, you know, informal phone conferences, three or four of us maybe, at a time, for whatever reason, and so that'll be a good thing. I think we'll be able to move a little faster. You know, I think we want to begin with the end in mind and the end, in my mind, anyway, is that, you know, we're gonna have an election someday. I really, I firmly believe that, you know, no matter what people's initial reactions are to the cost and they hear the cost, you know, that will never happen, you know, it just, it's just too expensive. My experience with the LID taught me that, I was really surprised how a lot of people just thought it was worth it. Now, this expense is greater than the cost of the LID, but, you know, on an order of magnitude, it's not that much different and it's, you know, it was a big number and yet, you know, we had such very substantial positive support. And so, the reason I think we, you know, no matter what kind of feedback we seem to be getting and the cost always comes up, there's a lot of people that we don't hear from or they don't say what they're thinking or whatever and I think that we, the only way we're gonna know whether we can have a sewer over there or not is to let the people vote and decide and so, we are gonna begin with the idea that someday we'll have an election and so then the process is, well, how do we best prepare people for that? And I just think it's, it's just the information, you know, if people have enough information to make a good decision, they'll make a good decision. And that, for them, that might be, it's still too expensive, you know, but, you know, we want to make sure they have one opportunity to, to make a real decision, so. So, that's the, so, we'll start meeting and working toward that, toward that goal.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Letting me off pretty easily here, but...
I think you covered several years of work really well in 10 pages and that's impressive for you.
It was very good.
Yeah, I tried to keep it as tight as possible.
You did a good job.
You know, well, you've still gotta put it all out there, yeah.
Well, no, but I, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, I think it's a lot of years of work all compressed down into 10 pages that is informative and lets people know that what we covered, what we thought weren't good options and what kept steering us in the direction that we ended up in.
Yeah, well, thank you. I had a lot of, a lot of good help from the committee members and it was a pleasure. A pleasure going forward.
Thanks again, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, Special Projects, anything from Special Projects?
Good evening. My name's Tom Rice, representing the Special Projects Events and Communications Committee and just to update on our activities, as you can see in the action items and the agenda, grants have been submitted for a fishing derby to be held in early May this year. We've had kind of a exploratory committee that's gotten together three times now, I think, to kinda formulate what do we need to look at and what are the things that need to be addressed and we've got a pretty good direction set. Monday, this committee, which is Steve Brown, Josh, Miles Schussinger and myself, will meet with some of the ELC people at noon and go over the forms and permits. We have copies of it, just wanna make sure we fill them out correctly and are aware of all the ramifications and we'll move forward with it. My own personal thought, I think, is we'll, I have enlisted help from other committee members, got a lot of replies back that they are looking forward to it. We'll probably wait till after the holidays before we get together and meet and really start to map things out. People are busy, but we'll hit the ground running after New Year's and I think it'll be a fun event.
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
Just one of the things I'd like to mention is that when this all started, I don't know how many years ago it was, Miles, the board funded a permit. It wasn't very much, it was like $150 and I think we kept that on the books and so, whatever initial... That's somewhere...
Well, there's, not specifically for fishing.
Yes, yes, for the fishing derby, there was a file, we spent a certain amount...
I mean, but an actual line item in the budget?
Yes, and...
What happened was, and I know what Kent's talking about, when I first came on, I went with Miles to grant, VCB grant presentation, they did the biannual cycle, it's yearly now, but as a part of that, we had paid, I believe it was $150 for a special project events application and the city said, we've got it, so when you guys come back two or three years from now, it's a little bit later than what we would've expected, but they should still have that on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that money, whatever initial funds we spent, it was kinda held for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Good, all right. Any other questions?
Do you have any other needs from us?
I don't think so at this time.
Not at this time? Okay.
No, just, I spoke with a couple of people in Northwest that coordinate these at great, they're very helpful. It's a big undertaking, but at the same time, I think it'll be fun and...
Yeah, I think it's a great event.
So, yeah, we'll be looking forward to it.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. The date is, that we have set is May 3rd was the date.
Second.
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 At least that's what it says in our...
Okay, there I am, taking notes on my phone, which I shouldn't be doing, but, so, I also wanted to compliment you, Tom, on bringing the handouts to the meeting with the city. Very good information on tournament up at Spanaway Lake and how many participat, participants there are and I don't remember the other lake right off hand.
The Diamond Lake.
Diamond Lake. But you just making those calls, these people who organize these are just a wealth of information on the do's and the don'ts and I think have already steered, steered us in certain directions that maybe we wouldn't have, which is gonna be a big time saver for us and so, as you know, I'll be out of town tomorrow, but conference me in, I sent out an email that I'd be more than happy to conference in at noon on Monday.
We will do that. And yes, these people I spoke to were very helpful and I said, I may need to call you back in the future, would that be okay? Oh, absolutely, they're very, they like to promote this stuff, so it's good to have that kind of experience to draw on.
Totally off subject, but same agenda item. The jet ski people came in and got garbage service for their event, so that's a go again?
Yes. They're gonna hold it in this year and hold the city, you know, give us 90% of their
That's what they said, okay.
Don Cox came by a couple of weeks ago with the OSNB permit and I signed us off on it as in previous years.
Great, good. Sorry to interrupt you, Tom.
No, no problem. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, that's exciting. Save Our Shoreline Water Monitoring, do we have a committee update?
Mary Ellen Rich for the Save Our Shores Committee. I talked to Jed Fly at Coastal Bank and he said that even though they had their target date, target number of floating gardens to build were 12, that they did sell five and they're five in people's hands now, so.
Cool.
I think that was more reasonable projection for the first year, so he said they'll continue and so if anybody needs a floating garden next spring, get your name in with him at Coastal Bank, he's the executive director...
Oregon Coast Bank.
Oregon Coast Bank, yes. He's the executive director of the Boy Scout Troop over there, so it's kinda neat. Let's see, what else? Boy Scouts water gardens. The, we're still working on shoreline restoration and I spoke to a lady who is kind of in and out and I told her that we would meet with her after the holidays, when she's back in, at the lake, so that's all kind of dependent on when they're here, so many of them, but we do have some names and if we just reach them. She also said that she needs some rebuilding and I said, well, we plant plants, we don't rebuild shorelines, so, we'll see what, and she was aware of that, so that worked out good. And the plant sale, we haven't set a date for it 'cause I need to have a committee meeting and we'll meet in the late winter, spring to plant something like that, so.
And that will have plants that we can plant in our floating gardens?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's what I need.
Yeah, that will be fun, yes. And any questions about the little tins of dirt, what Dana said? That is eight little tete-a-tete daffodils that should've come up, but they're just, they're slow, so they're a little bit late spring.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
All right, District Projects and Operations, Josh.
All right. Excuse me, talking a lot this week. The compressor has been running fine, we haven't had any issues since the diffuser cleaning. It's actually ran a little bit lower PSI and the temp's down about five degrees and that's held out since John came here, a little over a month ago, I think, when he came and did the work with Bill and I out there. So, we're in good shape there. I've done a visual on the boils, they call them out on the lake and they look to be of the right lift and everything that's been described to us to be good and like I said, the compressor shack and everything has been functioning with no issues that I'm aware of. I don't think Bill has picked up on anything. I know he goes and checks on it all the time as well, so we have no problems with that. He has, oh, let's skip that. The video monitoring project has been fine, the cameras have been holding out much more stable. I've had to do resets about 75, 85% less and generally it's something weather related down there, so that's worked out awesome. Now that we've got that one stable, I'm working with Dewey, Jim Dewey, to try and get that one up there at Jim Whistler's house. I believe he volunteered for us to have it up there and we were initially gonna put it at Blue Heron, but with the possible sale of that property, we didn't know if we could keep that infrastructure there in place, so a little more stable over there. I'll keep updating on that as we move along. The Airstream Pro has been moved over. Thank you, Bill, for getting that over to Blue Heron Landing. We're waiting on a new plug in to get it plugged in, 'cause we have to swap that out depending on the electrical box that we put it in, so, but it's all mounted and ready to go. Noel's happy to have it up there again, too, so. Bays and Marinas are what that piece of equipment was made for and that was where our first pilot test was over two years ago with it and we had some great results up that way, so we will put it out there again. The Devils Lake Flood Protection Project has been moving along. I have some general description that I've left in here, 'cause it's kind of a multi-phase project right now. We did a second woody debris removal, a lot of the wood that we had moved off to the side was actually getting ready to kinda come back into the channel, so thank you, North Lincoln Sanitary, for quickly getting us drop boxes out there so we can get that out of there before these king tides came through, because those eight ton logs were dangerously close to ODOT's bridge work and a bunch of equipment they had down there as well, so we thought it best to get those out of there to reduce the hazards. So, it looks very clean down there now, we have a huge reduction in debris in that channel, so we're keeping an eye on it at the moment, hoping because of some of those bigger logs being out, that maybe some of that sand will shift out and maybe the ocean or our tidal activity can punch a little bit of a channel ourselves, just to get a little better drainage. Nonetheless, we are still working on our US Army Corps project right now. Tom was in earlier Monday and I spoke with him about expanding it out. The initial idea was to take out only 2,000 cubic yards. After talking with the Corps, they think that we should submit for a higher amount to cut a slightly larger channel. That way, the material that sloughs in off the sides won't just refill the work that we're doing, 'cause they don't wanna go through the regulatory process and come back six months later and say, oh, well, we, you know, we removed all the, our 2,000 cubic yards, but it wasn't enough. So, I think initially, they just want us to set up for what we want to actually get out of there.
So, we're still going to have a maintenance permit, though, so that we don't have to do this each time we get a clock?
Correct. That's gonna be a separate effort that I'm working on with Lincoln City right now.
Oh, it's separate.
I'm gonna work with, I've been working with Stephanie and Lila of Lincoln City to kinda get that permit, 'cause now it's kinda pseudo between the Devils Lake Water Improvement District and City of Lincoln City as far as its management, so I'm working with them to either have, either have them take the permit completely and extend it or us take the permit and extend it, one way or the other.
Is there an advantage to one or the other?
I don't believe so yet. Once I get a little further in conversation with them, I'll be able to see if there is or is not. I know that they're, they don't want to take on any additional resources or responsibility at the moment, so they're certainly leaning towards us taking the permit over, which is certainly something before we decide on to discuss amongst the board, but it's one of the routes that we can take and that would definitely get us greater control and management over that permit, especially wanting to change it into an emergency permit, then we could essentially draft the language and ask the city to sign as a stakeholder or joint partner, which they have agreed to do.
What about financial responsibility if we were to take over the whole thing?
Financial responsibility, conversations to date with the city are that they are going to cover 50% of the costs, so.
So, that could be a memorandum of understanding or something?
Certainly something that we could...
Separate from the permit?
Yeah, that we could get up in...
Is the other way for us now to...
Yeah.
It's an MOU or something, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it would simply just be kinda swapping sides of the table and someone taking more responsibility than before and like I said, it's, it would give us a better vehicle to form the permit how we want, because we're not having joint meetings with the city and making suggestions for the city to do it this way, you know, do it this way, like, okay, this is how we wanna do it, we can redraft this, change the language and add in the east side that we wanna do up to the bridge and then since we'll also have the internal dialogue of how we're forming up for the larger removal to get the initial slug out of there, we can play that into the emergency removal as well and say, because we're doing this project, such and such amount, on such and such date we'll go out, we expect this much or this deposition rate to come back in, here's our proposal annually to do this much on this area. More responsibility for our district, of course, but it's not, it's not as if we're very hands-off with it. very hands-off with it at the moment, anyway. And if anything, I think it would be better to get it in a primary stakeholder's hand, whether it's us or the city, whomever. So there's no question as to who calls the excavators when there's an emergency problem or the river is blocked up.
Well, and the fact that, not that the city doesn't do a good job with managing it when there is an issue, but ultimately, it affects us if they don't take care of their end.
Correct.
And so it makes sense for us to be the handler of that since it's our properties that are affected by both the west side and the east side.
Certainly, certainly. And then keep in mind as well that the First Street, First to Third Street Canal, hard to keep track of exactly what it is. A half of it is city property and half is Lincoln County property. The city doesn't have any intention of taking the half, which is the northern part of that canal, over from the county, so it will remain so. However, the really blocked up portion, First Street, that we also pulled some degree out of and city, you know, shared responsibility on the last round of that with us as well. I made, I had some calls made this week, and the state actually considers it waters of the state and not city property. So we will also have to include that in the permit itself, that canal section. It was my hope that that was mainly considered city property and that DSL or Army Corps would have no interest in it, and we could maybe do a limited removal there just to help try and alleviate some of the flooding through that canal area, which I discussed with our mayor, and of course, he was on board to take care of that maintenance. But we're going to have to include that in the permit as well.
So then we'll third, the, I'm thinking of the east end of the canal, I guess. Is that the part that the county is responsible for?
The part that's flowing right now that's farther north in the lake and always makes that crook there, so I'm trying to visualize, is the county property. The really, the part next to Vivian's, closest to Vivian's?
Yeah.
That's the city property, the one between Vivian's and the hotel, closest to the ocean.
But then up here, this one is the county?
Correct. It cuts a diagonal line.
So you're saying, I guess I'm confused. So since it's county property, we need to get the state involved?
Well, county or city, the state is involved regardless.
DSL has the water rights to it regardless of whether it's city or county property.
Correct.
We thought since it was a city property that we could just get the city's approval to clean it up.
Yeah, to do the whole thing or do any work in it. However, if we just have the city's permission now, we will also need the county's permission if we choose to work in the bottom 50% of that canal.
So have you talked with Katie Jacobson?
I have not about that side of the canal yet because it is actually flowing, and we have some depth in there. You can actually still get jet skis and things back in there and some shallow water craft, whereas the other end's blocked. It's dammed essentially.
Yeah, I guess, you know, the front part of the canal, the city just gave permission. We were able to clean it up.
No, we weren't able to remove.
Well, no, the debris and stuff we can take out, woody debris and everything.
Talking about sand.
Yeah, this is, this is sand we were talking about now.
Oh, okay.
The actual, the actual built-up sediment.
We thought that since it was city property, that DILWID and City Lincoln City could come to an agreement and we could just clean that out.
Oh.
But DSL is saying, no. It's still our water.
Yeah.
I was still on the debris.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it gets complex with the multiple relationships. Yeah, the debris is done at the moment. We're now in a maintenance phase as far as taking that out.
So the debris didn't go all the way back into the county property. It stayed at the city's.
Well, and most, yeah. Well, and there's that, there's the bridge there, of course, that crosses as well, and that has actually blocked some of it and dammed it up. But I know the city has referred several calls to me, and even personally at the district, I've received calls from people concerned about that area in particular, you know, being essentially a little half horseshoe pond when our water even is at 9.5, 9.8 now. It's got no flow.
Yeah, full. So the county waterways or the state waterway, it begins where?
The state is everything. The state is claiming, yeah, is claiming essentially any water in the lake.
Hundred percent.
And, you know, that was a minor standing because I thought, well, we have things like canals in Indian Shores and some other places, but that's not the answer that they gave me, so.
So private canals would fall, DSL would feel the same about them?
I, that is, has to be my assumption. I can't see whether it would be a differentiation between municipal and private.
It's lake water.
Yeah, generally, if anything, they would be more latitude given to a municipal organization to manage it, so.
So I have a question on this, the sand removal.
Mm-hmm.
And the contractor that gave us the original survey, did they ever modify it as far as volume of sand?
We, are we talking about like the elevation and the volume of sand?
Yeah.
We figured that out based on the elevation, and that was basically in an agreement with ODOT that that's correct. They know that there is that differential between the two benchmarks, but we factored that in. We, it didn't change our volume because they just took it, took one foot and added it or subtracted it. So it didn't, it just dominoed it down.
Okay, so another, the next one is as far as the total cost to dig out and haul the sand, is it, do we have a yardage on that or is it just based on?
We priced it about, yeah, at about 2,000 cubic yards, which is the original plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we're hoping and had Army Corps suggestion to expand that a bit. So we, the goal is to get down to the natural riverbed, the cobbles in the bottom, which was identified by our survey from Civil West we had done earlier in the year. To do that, after that survey, we found that it may be potentially beneficial to take some more yardage out and increase that scope in the area. Also, the Corps agrees with the fact that we should put in more volume to take out than less if we feel it's going to be beneficial. So we're figuring out the numbers and everything on that.
Regardless of what the volume is that we put in, like, let's say we said it was a million yards.
Yeah.
Once we hit that pebble base, we'll stop regardless of how many yards we've pulled out.
Correct, correct. And when, and as that area being as dynamic as it is, inches, feet, there's literally change almost every day out there, especially when we have weather events like this. So that's another reason to have kind of that buffer in there. To get back to Bill's question about price, we priced the original 2,000 cubic yard removal with a traditional excavation, just a dig and haul, at approximately $10,000 was the one bid that we have on it so far. So well within our wheelhouse as far as that goes, and with Lincoln City supporting us on funding that, those projects as well. We're in good shape there.
So they verbally said that they would share in some of that?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Right, very good.
Yeah, and they actually did already cut us a check for the first log removal, so that is in the bank.
Yeah.
Let's see, I think the rest of that is, I think we covered that. Does anyone have any more questions on the, okay?
So, well, can you give us, I know I asked you the other day for.
ETA?
Yeah.
ETA right now is literally going to be the in-water work period. We have more than enough time to get it in. The permit will go in with months for them to review it before the in-water work period.
Which is October of 2020.
Exactly, exactly.
To February?
Yes. And that is, that is our.
So you think we should be able to do this work in that time? We shouldn't have our?
Personally, I think we should have been able to do it last year. But no, I believe that we can have this project on by then.
I honestly think it will be kind of interesting because it will almost be exactly a year that we've had the debris out of there?
Yeah.
To see what the dynamic of the seasons and the water volumes do without the debris in there. Because I think, I mean, there's a possibility that we may see some changes just from that.
It's very possible.
As much as I hate to wait, I think it's, I think it'll be interesting to have almost exactly a full year.
Yeah, and we're not, you know, we're not flooding much now. We've had much higher water levels. We're looking in that direction. We have all indications that that could definitely happen, given large drain events and what we have going down there.
Sure, we haven't had very much rain.
This is, this is very proactive to get this done, to have solutions on tap, to make sure that we can get that cleared, just like we have the emergency solution when the river blocks up on the west side. So we need to have the same thing on the east side. And part of that rationale behind these permits and that strategy is so it doesn't get held up, so we get the major amount of everything out of there if our waters don't move, and at the same time, working in tandem to make that a permanent solution, but not, not counting on them approving a maintenance permit. We would have a much higher chance of them approving, approving a single removal fill permit. It's essentially just us asking and a couple of stakeholders, whereas the other one is going to have city involvement, at least as signing off. There'll be additional meetings. You know, they, they may or might have to put both these things out for public comment even, so.
Okay.
Water quality has been great in the lake so far. Our algae has decreased significantly. It always does in the winter. It held on a little longer this year, and I think it was just because of that really long summer we've had. It was something I heard at the conferences I attended as well, is that everyone had quite a bit more algae this year. Less cyanotoxin in some areas, believe it or not, other places. This year, none of that was identified in our lake, thankfully. I went out sampling. Alex went out with me a week or two ago, I think it was, we went out on the one good day of excellent weather we had. Our DOs are awesome on the bottom once again, in and outside of the field. We're over 90%. So that's definitely held even throughout the winter months, which we would expect. Our pHs are around 7.4 or 7.5 in most of the areas around the lake, which are outstanding for us as well. Turbidity and everything is very low. I think the next thing is actually a heading I need to add in. I plan on making this change to the agenda for the next meeting. We're going to add in vegetation management as another general operations, or, let's say, District Projects and Operations heading item. I will go ahead and give you an update on that as well. We went out, I went out with Aquatechnics last week. They came down from Washington. They're a C Pro company that does vegetation management, harvesting lots of different things that relate to lakes and things that grow in them. What they found was a outbreak or overgrowth, I guess, of parrot feather, which is a common invasive species around here. The state parks have dealt with it in years past, even in and around the lake. It's been in our lake before. It's in lots of lakes in the country, and especially around the mid-coast. Aquatechnics, when they were here, I instructed them to pay extra attention to the parrot feather itself as far as extents, locations. From that, we'll get that planned. The deliverable should, deliverable should be here Monday. That will include new lake bathymetry, which will give us our depths on the bottom, bottom hardness, and a general profile of the lake. It'll also include bio-based QC maps, which are used to estimate biomass and volume of plants, so amount of plants growing in certain areas. That map and those maps and reports, along with the visual observations and surveys they did, did some physical rake tosses out there, species identification. All that's going to be written up in a report I'm supposed to receive Monday, and I'll get that out to everyone, and that'll lead us to our next conversations we need to have over vegetation management. We've already had some conversations, and we have some options on tap for certain types of plants, things like aquatic harvesting, which work for things that don't fragment, larger plants and things like that. It's very effective on, however, parrot feather, this current one has our issue. It is a fragmenting plant and also an auto-fragmenting plant. If anyone sees it in or around the lake, I'm getting some informational posts out right now. Alex is working on that. We're going to have that on Facebook and the website so people know how to ID it, what it is, what it looks like, how to get it out safely. Because of this fragmenting thing that I mentioned, any little piece of this plant that breaks off can reroute somewhere else in the lake. So even if you see it floating in the lake, please remove it and get rid of it. It is in and around the shorelines mostly right now. It can grow out in deeper waters. After I receive this report from Aquatechnics, have a discussion with the board, we will come up with some additional options other than just aquatic vegetation harvesting to have on tap for this plant and other ones coming up. But as we move through these things, we'll, we will have these conversations and find the best solutions to whatever problem comes up, so.
So Josh, based off of what you have shared with us and just looking, looking it up, so if I'm a property owner and have this at my shoreline, it's okay for me to go out and pull it out? I just want to get all of it out of the lake and any fragments as well?
I would, I would say if it's very close to the water and you don't know if you can get all the fragments, don't touch it. If it's, if it's out of the water enough to where it's on land and it's not going to roll back down in the hill, and you are certain you can get 100% of it by the root and every piece and leaf, then carefully you can remove it. But certainly, if any of it's free-floating in the water on your shoreline or out in the open water, put it in your boat, get rid of it. Get it out of the water.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You can, you can take it out, but don't leave it in the water.
Correct, correct. But yeah, especially if it's free-floating, absolutely. Get it, get it out of the water.
Okay.
Josh, what does get rid of it mean exactly? Because it roots anywhere apparently, so composting or?
I would say exactly that. I'd say composting is the best thing to do away, away from the water, of course, just in case a bird digs through it or something. You never know. That's one of the issues with this type of plant. It doesn't take much. Come in on a boat, it can roll down a hill on a storm drain. A matter of fact, one of the outbreaks of it is in a drainage ditch. Could have easily washed out from anywhere and down a hillside. So best efforts are what we need to do with this.
I have a question that somebody asked me, and I didn't know the answer to it. So I know if I bring a boat into the area, there's some lakes that actually you have to have your boat physically inspected?
Correct.
Before you put it in? Who funds that type of program?
Generally, that would be someone like DEQ or more likely Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. The issue with those organizations at the moment, as we've mentioned and deal with in previous meetings, they're very understaffed, and they just don't, they don't have the resources committed to it. I know exactly what you're talking about. You go to certain lakes in different states, Washington, Idaho, you cannot put it in the water until a volunteer or someone that is out there inspects that.
Right.
And this is a conversation I've started to have with others and even a couple of the board members that this is one of those things where we need more tools in the toolbox other than just treatment. We need to start working on some boat wash stations and maybe, maybe funding or anything to have some more monitoring. But currently, we only have signs. And, you know, we're, we're one of many, many, many lakes in Oregon in the same exact situation, but we, we have the ability with the time and effort that everyone's putting in through our district to maybe make some of those things a little bit better.
I wonder, not to add more people for you to manage, but I wonder if the county in their community service hours, if we could have people train at least during recreation window to be at the, basically only two boat, main boat launches on the weekends, even.
Well, and I think that's.
With nothing else to inform people.
Yeah, and I think that's great, and the information and everything, of course, but we, not even our largest state park has a basin or even a garden hose set up to do this.
Oh.
So.
So drains.
Yeah, drains away from the lake.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Gotcha, okay.
It's bigger.
Yeah, so.
I thought that East Devil's Lake did have one.
I've, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, the campground doesn't, do they even have a boat ramp at the campground? I don't think they do.
The campground, I was thinking of Regatta Grounds in East Devil's Lake.
Yeah, no, Regatta does not, and Brown Bear, I noticed, I always call it Brown Bear.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, there's definitely not one up there. The upside to that is they have a huge parking lot. They even have some asphalt that needs to be replaced in the vicinity, but I believe they have the infrastructure there with restrooms and everything to run a water line, a long lot way away from the lake where you could easily grade and base it something.[1692.81]
Up by the restrooms would be perfect.
And that's our biggest boat ramp, you know, and our highest volume, I would imagine. Regatta would be a close second, but there's more challenges associated with that and just the space.
Yeah.
The space of Regatta. But is it necessary? I think so. If it stops, any amount of invasive species get in, now we're, this is just one coming back, you know, that we're dealing with for certain changes like the sea lion eating all the grass carp, unforeseen things that have accelerated either the plant growth or some of these management things that we have to take care of. But if we can stop one quagga mussel from getting in the lake, it's worth all the effort of bringing stakeholders together and preventing that if at all possible. Because these are not just aesthetic-type problems. These are huge economic impact problems with invasive species.
So once we have this report back, then what's our next step?
The next step, we'll be talking with them and their parent company, Seepro. They do aquatic herbicide applications, other things that have low or zero fish toxicity, which are approved by our State's Department of Environmental Quality through application licenses and basic plans. And that's essentially what this Seepro company does nationally.
Do we have to get permits for that or do they?
They will do that because the person actually applicating it has to sign and be on the permit. We would sign off as the organization allowing them, requesting them to do that.
And do we know how long that process takes?
I spoke with them. They could be out in the spring. It's not a three-week kind of thing. You know, it depends on the volume. I don't know until I get those maps back yet and have that conversation with them. It could definitely take more than one application. There's some different, just some different caveats to that type of treatment as well. But it's certainly the most accepted method to, you know, control the spread of a lot of these invasive macrophytes when we have options come off the table, like we no longer have the grass carp as an option. So we have to replace that or speak about that some more or just re-review our options as we move forward and as we have to deal with each of these individual challenges.
Yeah, I think, thinking a little bit bigger picture here, as we go forward, I think financially, we need to think about what it's going to cost to manage the lake and the vegetation with the carp gone. Because, well, we had issues with the carp in there with our water quality and I think we all kind of saw the writing on the wall when the grass carp were going away. But I don't know, I mean, I certainly don't have a handle on what we're looking at, you know, short, mid, and long range for the financial impact of vegetation management.
I looked at it and I did some really cursory, very, very cursory numbers based on, I think it's maybe on seventy-five or eighty acres of treatment, which we're talking shorelines and pockets and some canals and areas. So it's probably, it probably does not amount to that much even. You know, and you're looking at thirty to forty thousand dollars-ish per treatment, so it can be very pricey. However, we do have other partners and we have other stakeholders in around the lake that we can approach once we get those numbers and once we get a plan laid out and recommendations. So I don't feel we're going to be completely on our own. But I certainly agree a hundred and ten percent that beyond just this discussion about this one, this one issue we're dealing with at the moment, we need to keep more funding coming in.
Well, and that doesn't even account for the mechanical harvesting that we think we may need to do for the rest of whatever is growing in it.
And there are new houses and new neighborhoods being built around Devil's Lake every day.
Well, I think we're starting to kind of look at the budget. And I think we're going to probably need to separate out some subcategories so that we can really have a good thought process about the harvesting. You know, one of the things, you know, what's next? We need to budget another survey of the lake probably a year from now and that needs to be in the budget so that we can do the comparison and see how much that this has grown. So, you know, we-
I don't want to get in a situation where we know we have an issue, but we didn't take care of it budgetarily, so now we're behind.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're fine this year, given the fact that any treatments would most likely be in the late spring. So they would probably even fall under our next budget cycle. If not, we could always, of course, go the route of calling up money from the improvement fund and doing a resolution if that's why it's there, if we need to, if we need to use that funding to take care of that, but.
So a couple, can I make one other point? And I know, probably sound a little bit like a broken record, but.
Let me guess.
Yeah, grass carp. I don't want to stop the conversation about grass carp. Because I just think, we know what the regulations say and we know that the lake doesn't qualify. But when you're talking about the evolution of the lake and where it's going and how fast it could get there, whatever there looks like, whether we like it or we don't, I think that we have to be able to have grass carp in the toolbox. And it may take us educating, maybe, you know, fish and wildlife. It may be that we cordon off an area of the lake to see what the effect of it. But I just think that we still need to have the conversation and get the right people in the room. You know, Josh has done such a good job of developing relationships and conversations that, you know, it's state the problem and how do we get there? You know, begin with the end in mind and what we want is managing the lake and the tools that we want in the toolbox. And then let's get some people who make the decisions on the regulatory side of the state in the room and see how they bend. You know, I even had talked about, you know, I work with the legislature a lot. Who is it that oversees these regulatory things that are in there and how can we persuade it? I think everybody knows we don't want to dump thirty, forty thousand carp in the lake. But, you know, having the conversation, you know, with this, you know, this parrot plant that it, you know, wasn't a problem before and I've done quite a bit of reading on it and normally grass carp don't like to eat it. But if there's nothing else to eat, I'm sure the roots were in the lake before. They were eating it. And so, you know, we know where one concentration of this, you know, parrot feather is. You know, is it that we can work with fish and wildlife to cordon off an area and at least do a small study? You know, I just can't say enough that we still need to continue to have the conversation about that along with everything else. The toolbox.
The toolbox.
Thinking outside the box.
Exactly. Not every tool for every situation and it doesn't hurt to have them in there. No, I can continue that conversation with ODFW. I did just touch base with them, I believe, a couple of months ago before I had included that information in the, what was the October board meeting? I can't recall. But yeah, I'll see about, the next step would either be a meeting with the board and myself and some ODFW management or, you know, straight to an appeals process. I would recommend the conversation firsthand.
Firsthand, yes.
Just to, you know, see what their feelings is, give them some of these other options and, you know, let them know we're we're not looking to dump forty thousand grass carp back into the lake because it worked once. However, just like you're saying, it wouldn't hurt to re-review that as an option since it did work. Too well, way too well.
Right.
But it did work for a intended purpose.
We would like the opportunity in the toolbox to get the nice balance.
Well, and we don't know how effective any of these options are going to be.
Right.
We're using our best management efforts and the best information out there to try these options. And we've had some really great successes with a few things in the past, but as we move forward, we will have to try more options.
So this says that, this is in ponds, that koi eat parrot feathers, so I'm assuming that carp would eat it.
Yeah. Those are prettier than our carp.
Yeah, koi are pretty carp. All right, does anybody else have any vegetative management comments?
There was one quick one I kind of skipped over and I am, I just wanted everyone to know I'm still in contact with a vault of DEQ on Thompson Creek and everything going on there with the watershed and upstream efforts. And that's one reason I had Alex come because she works on Midcoast Watershed Partnership. And every now and then, we can get a little bit of joint work together on things to perpetuate that situation as well since that's really out of the district's hands as far as the regulation. We're just in that unique position where we have to bring attention to our side of things, so.
So do we have any recourse for cleaning out what came in?
I, really suing the US Forest Service might be the best thing and I hate to even say something like that.
But I mean, as far as just getting a permit to do it, would that be?
A permit to do it is a removal fill with US Army Corps.
And that needs to be done by the property owners because that's their, you know.
Technically private property. And I had that discussion with DLNA that I would speak with the board if they had interest in supporting that project since it is definitely an environmental issue, was caused from, you know, whatever we perceive upstream or whatever happened. But it happened and it definitely dumped a lot of sediment.
I guess it seems to me from a regulatory standpoint, the sooner that we got on it and we being us, the canal people, the neighborhood association, whoever it is.
Yes.
The sooner that we got on it, the more likely we would be able to, you know, say to the regulators of like, "Look, this came in in a period of seventy-two hours or whatever it was, crazy amount." "We want it out."
Yes.
Instead of waiting for a few years saying, "Well, back when there in twenty nineteen, some sediment came in and anyhow."
I would say so, that that would be the best thing to do. Just to get it in there and that way, if there's any back and forth and many of these organizations refer to each other for one reason or another. So the sooner you have it in, that person may not even be working there in six months, so.
So does the board have any issue with Josh contacting the property owners that own that canal to see if we could partner with them to help get that permit going?
Are we having a, is there a DLNA meeting planned anytime soon? Those are usually great opportunities for me to take it with the neighbors.
Yeah.
Nothing planned at the moment? Okay.
We have our annual meeting, pretty much DL, a couple of times a year.
Okay.
Unless something comes up. When was our last annual?
I wasn't there, so I can't remember.
I was there. It was.
And I briefly spoke with Mark Christie of DLNA about this and he thinks it sounds like a good idea to get moving on something.
That, you know, that property across from the riches and the Christie's and, you know, it's so accessible, you know, almost if you could just get an excavator.
Yeah.
Just pull that stuff out and put it on that property.
Yeah.
All that silt, I don't know who owns the property there.
Mary Ellen, she does.
Yeah.
Is it Jerry and Jason?
Yeah, they might like some extra land, you know. And if it's inert and it's a stockpile location, you could have an agreement.
The piece of land's pretty big there, three acres. And, because I know that that canal has filled up.
Yeah, oh yeah. You can look at the Google Maps and even in ten years, we're seeing, like we see at the D River, worse.
And so you're saying that all of the debris and silt that came down before you even touch it to do any kind of maintenance of it, dredging, that you need a permit? So we couldn't partner up or the neighbors couldn't partner up with a couple of contractors and make that happen?
That has been tried before.
Yeah.
It was the state that didn't let us do it.
Okay.
Because it has been dredged out since I've lived there, but then we tried to do it again. I don't know, Mark was at the meeting, I don't remember who else, and couldn't get a permit to do it.
Yeah.
Well.
All about the permits.
Yeah.
When you say couldn't get a permit to do it, you mean it?
This core of.
Army Corps?
Army Corps that live on that canal were trying to get a, some kind of a permit to get it dredged out.
Did they actually apply?
I think so, but you'd have to talk to Mark because he was there. I don't think Mary Ellen and Larry were there yet.
Okay.
I'm not actually on the canal, but I went to the meeting where they were trying to, and everybody volunteered to raise money to help pay for it.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
And they couldn't get any place on it.
Let me, let me get up with Mark Christie of DLNA and see what, yeah, what happened and get that figured out. And if there's something we can do, or if it was just something lacking, then maybe we can throw in and get it done, so.
I think a lot of times people are like, "Oh yeah, we couldn't get a permit," but it's because they didn't apply for a permit.
Or the correct permit, or.
Yeah, right, so anyhow.
Well, I know they said, in the end, they said they couldn't get permission to do it from somebody, so.
I mean, there's a lot of time, I heard that about a dock too. "Oh, you'll never get a permit for a dock." And you just have to jump through the hoops, so. All right, so that's Thompson Creek General Operations.
The district's financial review was complete. No major issues were noted. There were a couple of adjusting journal entries. I just resent the final draft out tonight from Signee to everyone. Take a look at it when you get a moment. The management representation letter that we have to sign off on is coming Monday, I believe, from them. So, you know, review it. Let me know if you have any comments or questions in between and I'll get those to Signee and get them answered. And if we're good, we can sign off and then be good before the next board meeting for the two thousand and nine.
There's a lot of verbiage in there. Not that, I think it's just justifying the price of it. So as you go through, as you go through it, a lot of the dialogue really is what they've done and what they've audited. I've seen the draft on it and so, all in all, very successful. No major things again this year.
Yeah, and along those lines, I know I'd spoke with you Steve, but just to mention, we're going to get the budget numbers back on the financial reports. That was something that came off when we swapped QuickBooks and everything with the new bookkeeper and they just didn't get put back in there. And I've been sick this past week, like a lot of people. So I missed my point with Cameron, then Cameron got sick, so we're early next week. We're meeting to get that taken care of.
Part of the change, for those of you who weren't here last meeting, you know, we've maintained in the district now and in our offices, our own computer with QuickBooks. And so prior to that, it was the bookkeeper's QuickBooks version and, you know, I found that there were no backups being done on a regular basis or at least away from a backup, away from where the bookkeeper was in case of an emergency. And so now we have that. It's being backed up. The zip drive is kept separately so that if anything happens, that you can still recover. And we're working on the budget. So the drive that we got from our past bookkeeper Teresa wasn't complete. It was complete for the financials, but the budget portion of the financials wasn't done in QuickBooks. It was done on something else that we couldn't get. And so Cameron is, and Josh is putting together those budget numbers in QuickBooks because QuickBooks does do a budget portion in there. And it will actually input everything into your budget as you make different entries. So it's just taking longer. Next meeting, we'll have the budget portion on all the financials.
Yeah, the first run-through and a lot of this is taking just a bit more time to get it set up. But as Steve mentioned, it's good protocol, so.
So do you want me to bring up on the action item? This came up also.
Oh, the credit, yes.
Yeah, so we ran into a little bit of a problem with Josh's travel to the conference and it was a timing issue. The credit card that Josh has has a twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit and it's not enough. And in order for us to change that, it takes a motion and then we'll have to take that motion to our bank and show it to them so that they can increase it. So Joanne can make a special note after we make the motion. Where we run into problems is putting airfare sometimes, especially if you're going all the way across the country.
And this was a first, that's why this has only happened this time.
You know, it just ran out. And so what Josh had to do was he had to use his own personal stuff, which is reimbursable and has been reimbursed. But it forced him to do that, which that should never be the case. And so, does anybody have any problems?
So you need a motion to increase the credit line to five thousand dollars?
To five thousand.
I assume of.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of increasing the credit card limit to five thousand dollars signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So.
I will get the minutes printed out from Joanne when she's done with them, have them signed and take them to TLC.
So you don't need us to come to TLC?
No, I can just have these, I can have you sign them, I believe, in just the minutes. I don't think we have to change it.
Call me if you do. I can run down.
No guarantees, but that was the process before, so.
All right. Non-agenda items, I have one item, emergency planning.
That's just an ongoing line item that we keep in mind as we move forward and, you know, emergency planning right now. We need to emergency plan for some boat wash stations, so.
I have one. Can you prepare a resolution to dissolve the sewer committee from one of our committees?
We had a draft about four months ago.
Right.
Yes.
But now that we've received the final report, we should take care of that. We can do that at the January meeting, but. Do we have to have the resolution here to vote on it, right?
Yes, for the. Uh, yes, for the terminology to be in front of us.
Okay. Any other non-agenda items?
I have one. I'd like to read a letter to the board. Pass that down to everyone. This is addressed to Chair, Chairwoman Tina French, but it really concerns the entire board. It is with great regret that I'm writing to inform you of my decision to resign on my position on the board of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District effective tonight. I've enjoyed my time on the board, but it's time to realign my priorities and give someone else an opportunity to express their views on matters pertaining to the lake. It has been an honor to serve the voters of this community and this board. In my five-and-a-half-year tenure, I hope that in some small way I've helped to make a positive difference in the management of this beautiful resource. Through my years of service on the board, I have met many wonderful community members that have become close friends and care deeply about the lake and its surroundings. Many of these same people have donated countless hours of their valuable time to monitor and improve the lake and surrounding environment. To them, thank you. Although I foresee challenges in the future, I'm confident that the board will be, uh, will be successful in meeting those challenges to the best interests of the lake, excuse me, so that the best interests of the lake are met. Best regards, Kent Norris. Thank you. So, with that, I submit my resignation to the board. And, um, I've spent five-and-a-half years-
That's crazy, it's been that long?
It's been a long time. I, and it's just time that I move on and that somebody else, uh, there's so many wonderful people out there that can, um, make a positive impact on this board, just like I hope I have, and, um-
That's the only typo I see in your letter.
What's that?
Is that you said in some small way you've helped to make the lake and you have made huge impacts on this lake.
Yeah, huge.
I, I know that everybody in the community, and I speak for all of us, um, appreciate the, I think without a doubt, you've put in more hours than all of us combined, and it-
Thank you.
It's much appreciated.
Yeah, well, it's time that, uh, someone else take over and do that, and thank you. So, I hope that, um, I don't know the process, I know that when I was appointed a vacancy, um, they asked for, uh, they had the lake manager solicit applicants, and then they, um, interviewed those applicants at the following board meeting and then chose one and seated him at that time, so I hope that that is, is a possibility that can take place.
I appreciate it. I, um, Josh, can you, um, maybe prepare something for Facebook would be a good, this would be a good opportunity for us to utilize our new Facebook and then, um, maybe even something in the paper?
Certainly.
And for sure on our website, obviously. And then make sure that we have, uh, quick and easy access to the applications so people that, um, are interested can-
Sure.
I hope that I can get together with, uh, Josh or somebody, because I have, I've been storing materials for the, the-
For five-and-a-half years.
For five-and-a-half years or some amount of time that, um, I'd like to not store at my house any longer. I also have a key to the, to the, um, compressor and a few things like that that I need to take care of, and so I hope-
Kent, thank you very much for your years. Thank you, I'll second that, and I would also say that I think you've been instrumental, uh, for, um, paving the way for this new board. Um, you know, I, I just think about, uh, when you came on, um, there was some challenges, and I think you were instrumental in your, not only managerial, but your organizational ability and your calmness, uh, to, um, make intelligent decisions that got us here today. And I truly appreciate you for that, and I, I know me deciding to come onto the board, um, really was because of what you did, and I knew that I had a good leader in a chair, and so, I thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I thank you and second all of that.
Any other non-agenda items? Josh?
I think that that's all the voice I've got left tonight.
Anybody here have anything they'd like to add? All right, with that being said, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I'll see you next year.